And, uh, Lord, as your servant Paul said to give thanks and to intercede for all those in authority, uh, Lord, I do that, and I, I thank you for each one of these servants. I thank you for justice and peace and unity as it's cultivated and protected under their leadership, and I intercede for them, and pray that you would continue to bless their service for the same, that we might be able to live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and dignity. Um, Lord, I pray to whatever degree, uh, it extends that, uh, you would bless their service for even peace and prosperity in our nation, uh, which we certainly need right now in this time of turmoil. Uh, but I thank you that you're on the throne and that you are the master, and we turn our eyes to you and trust you, pray that you will bless the meeting tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Mayor Palguda?
Present.
We have a Coram Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. We're gonna start off with 5A, we'll be doing proclamations. Clerk, please start for 5A Constitution.
Whereas September seventeen, twenty twenty, marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law nine-hundred-and-fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeen through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I call Palguda Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby proclaim September seventeen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty, to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to come over here face-to-face to the Prescott Valley Town Council, and my name is Debbie Lamb, I am the new regent for the Yavapai chapter of the D A R, and we are, we do represent Prescott Valley, that's where our chapter's out of, and I also would like to take this opportunity to, um, tell you about the Constitution Week, uh, we have a display, the library has graciously let us in again this year to put up our, uh, Constitution Week display, and the Constitution Week is always from September seventeenth to the twenty-third, those dates, and I appreciate this, thank you very much.
You do. Next up for our proclamations will be Homeless Awareness Month.
Whereas Prescott Valley, Arizona joins the nation in recognizing November as Homelessness Awareness Month, this reaffirms that stability and basic needs are essential to all children and families. Over a hundred-and-ten homeless students in the Prescott and Prescott Valley area are experiencing crisis in obtaining housing and lack of healthy support system, proper meals and housing. Agape House of Prescott has provided over seventeen thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-seven nights to call home for otherwise homeless students and families, and whereas there's a strong research that teaching personal wellness and appropriate life skills training provides the tools to reach a self-sufficient and independent lifestyle, Agape House of Prescott has provided over two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen hours of case mentoring and life skills training, and whereas the lack of healthy support systems begin to unravel multiple areas including housing, jobs, childcare, and transportation. Without the simplicity of the basic needs being met, children cannot excel in education, and research has found that without a proper education, future goals become out of reach, creating a cyclical problem that needs to be eliminated. Agape House of Prescott has provided basic needs of housing plus utilities of four-hundred-and-sixty-four times, and whereas through the collaboration efforts of the town, businesses, churches, neighborhoods, clubs, and individuals, homeless families may receive options for housing and training to overcome the hurdles and barriers that have such caused this dilemma. On average, it takes a combined effort from twenty individuals to get one more family off the streets, into beds, and back until the pathway to independence. Now therefore, be it resolved that I call Palguda Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley to hereby proclaim November twenty twenty as Homelessness Awareness Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and call upon and encourage the citizens of Prescott Valley to give back and get involved with Agape House of Prescott in their vision in providing a pathway to independence for families in crisis.
For about the last ten years, Agape House has been housing homeless families that we have found in cars and campgrounds, and we even found a family that was underneath a camper shell, not in the camper, but underneath a camper and slept on the ground. I'm Jim Flower, co-founder and executive director of Agape House of Prescott. To my left, your right, is Becky Mitchell, administrative director, and our director of family affairs is, is, uh, Vicky White. There are paid staff, by the way, I'm volunteer. Um, so, we've been doing this for about ten years, we've been very successful, the mayor came and toured our property in Prescott, and Lori Hunt, thank you for your time, and I have, want to make an announcement that we're gonna commit and bring a property out, buy a property out here, and do the same, uh, program out here in Prescott Valley. We wanna be part of your solution to helping the homeless families, we don't do drug, we don't do, um, those kinda things, uh, abuse, what we do is homeless families, it's a family, and there's no resources for families, and that's what we specialize in. So we're making an announcement, we're gonna come out to Prescott Valley, we're gonna buy a property, and we're gonna start housing homeless families, and, uh, we're excited about it. So thank you for your support, and I'm looking forward to the future with you. Next up, I'd like to welcome Marnie down from the chamber, or up, she's right here in the front row. We'll be discussing the Chamber of Commerce community excellent recipients for twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, and wonderful citizens of Prescott Valley. Every year, the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce honors, recognizes individuals, businesses, and organizations that contribute to our community with our Community Excellence Awards. We present them normally at our annual banquet, which is held in July, but this year, because of all the circumstances, we were unable to hold that. So on August the fourteenth, we had a virtual presentation where we brought our, our award recipients in, and we presented them with their awards and flowers, and we videotaped it, and it can be seen on our YouTube and Facebook, and I know it's linked with the town, and Signals AZ also has it, um, on there also. Right now, I'm just gonna thank the mayor and councils for allowing us to recognize our recipients in a public setting, and we're really thrilled to have, these are normal, everyday people that do things, unsung heroes, as I call them, and they've been nominated and they've been awarded to receive these awards, so, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity, and to all the award recipients, this is another little exciting moment for you, and we're really thrilled to give you this extra opportunity to be seen and thanked again, so, thank you all for what you do.
So what we're gonna do is, we'll call each recipient down, you get a, a few moments to say whatever words you'd like to say, and if you don't wanna say anything, that's okay, I don't wanna stress anyone out, and, uh, I would just ask that you just stay up here, and then, uh, we'll take a picture at the end. So, there are some people that aren't here, but I'd still like to recognize them as well. So, Student of the Year, Aaron Ott, is not available tonight, um, but I wanna give him some recognition, but who is available for our Student of the Year is Seeley Plachinsky. So Seeley, can you come on down?
I just wanted to say, I feel very honored to receive this award, and I just wanna thank everyone who helped me become, will get this far.
So our Teacher of the Year is Chris Kawabata, Liberty Traditional.
Uh, let's see, um, I guess I wanna say, uh, thank you to the community, I'm only been living here for three years, and the community's been very warm, and, uh, thank you to all the parents and to all the kids that made this possible, because I like it here, and I feel like, uh, I'm gonna do my best, no matter what, what school I'm at, but I'm, right now, I'm at Liberty, and I feel like that's where my, my home is for now. Thank you.
An Organization of the Year is one we've heard lots and lots of great things about, and do lots and lots of amazing things in our community. I would like to welcome down the Firefighter Angel Foundation and, and everyone involved in that.
So the Firefighter Angel Foundation organization that started in two thousand eight with just one family that my wife, Tammy, and I did out of our house, and we helped some people at Christmas time, they had a, a dad, father, that was the sole provider of the family that was diagnosed with terminal cancer, was gonna pass away before Christmas, so, they had three kids in the family, and the mom was stressed just about what she was gonna do with life in general and finances and all that, so, a friend of ours came to the fire station, I was there, and said, "Hey, can you help them?" We said, "Well, yeah, I, I don't know how, but yes, we will," and that grew to where we are today, and last year, we've helped way over two thousand kids in throughout Yavapai County, all in Prescott, Prescott Valley, Dewey, Humboldt, and then we also went to Cottonwood. But, just with the town of Prescott Valley, I can't say thank you enough to Marnie and Kel as well, but just everybody here and the support and the welcome that we've had to make us continue to grow every year, and we're, we're here to do as much as we can for kids and families in need that are during crisis or any of those things that are happening. So, thank you very much to council and Kel for all the support and everything you've done, and to Marnie and the chamber.
The Community Improvement Award goes to Homestead Talking Glass, and there'll be a representative from Homestead here, Mr. Guy Rogerson. I was only told that you were coming, so I apologize.
No, 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 come on, no, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. I just, I apologize for not introducing you. You weren't on my list.
I don't know who to speak to, so I'm gonna kinda split the difference here. Good evening, uh, Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor, uh, Town Clerk, appreciate all your service and what you do for the community, so thank you very much. On behalf of Ron and Brad Fain, and the entire team of the Fain Signature Group, thank you for the recognition and honor. Uh, Ron and Brad asked me to express their sincere apologies for not being able to make it to the important event tonight. My name's Guy Rogerson, proud teammate at FSG. I'd also like to recognize Marnie and the, the great work that the chamber does before I go forward, so thank you. For those of you that may not know, twenty twenty represents sixty years of building community at the Fain Signature Group. It was the vision of Bill and Nancy Fain, who after completing university, moved back home to the Rafter Eleven Ranch in nineteen sixty to begin planning the vision of what is now the town of Prescott Valley, one of Yavapai County's most successful communities. Through several gifts of land, careful planning, a lot of grit, the Fains helped bring in the necessary infrastructure, industry, schools, healthcare, roads, airport, and homes for the people to make a better life. Today, Bill and Nancy Fain's vision and work is continued by their children, Ron, Brad, Norm, and Don. Their vision is supported by the work of what we call the Team of Teams at the Fain Signature Group comprised of twelve residents from Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Chino Valley, truly a team vested in our entire region, working daily to make a wonderful life for all. Thanks again on behalf of the entire, uh, the entire team at Fain Signature Group, let's make it a great life. Thank you.
Next up will be our Norm Paris, so Volunteer of the Year, Kim Hogan, Yavapai Regional Medical Center, East Campus. Kim, come on down.
It's certainly a great honor to represent, uh, Yavapai Regional Medical Center. They're a great hospital, as I think you all know, wonderful management, and some really terrific volunteers, and I'm just one of them, they're all really very great people. Thank you very much.
Next up will be our Chamber Member of the Year, they're not able to make it tonight, but it'll be Coiman Construction, so let's give a round of applause for Coiman Construction. Also not able to make it tonight for our Citizen of the Year is Rosanna Firebin, so let's give a round of applause for Rosanna. Next up, Business Leader of the Year, Robin Hazelwood, and Tori Simpson, Pet Headquarters.
That's me last time. She did that to me last time. I just like to, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, town council members, Vice Mayor, and, uh, Marnie, of course, and all of the chamber members and the community for this great acknowledgement and award. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Oh, there's Tori's. Yep, so our final award will go to, it's called the Prescott Valley Heritage Award, and you're gonna hear a lot about this man tonight, so, and he's gonna be up here for a little bit, so, Mr. Woody Lewis, come on down.
I'd just like to thank everybody, and I particularly thank Community Development Department for all the help that made me successful. Thank you.
Pull that down here, we're gonna try to get a picture. How do you think this is gonna go? We can do two rows.
People in front, sure, people in back.
There you go.
There you go, yeah, there you go. All right, next up, folks, and we don't hand these out too often, I'm sure if you're watching from home, so, Service Award, Woody Lewis, Building Official, thirty-five years with the town of Prescott Valley, so, that right there is just amazing.
So in preparation for tonight, I had a conversation with Woody, and I told him I'd be brief, and then I wrote a few things down, so, maybe I won't be so brief. Uh, I wanna take note for just a minute, uh, the staff is in the back, really appreciate what you guys do, uh, he really deserves the accolades, accolades that we're giving him this evening, but I also wanna remind you, this is the second time I've seen Woody without a hat, so, take a moment to recognize that, please. So, Woody and I were, uh, talking this morning, and he pointed out that he's been here thirty-five years, and I told him, "Well, I can do with the math, I understand that," and he reiterated that the first ten years were especially rough, because they didn't have anything, uh, no supplies and so forth, all the roads, uh, at least all but one were dirt roads, couldn't necessarily find your way around because they didn't have street signs and things like that, so he's come a long way. I attributed the fact that the first ten years were tough because I wasn't here, uh, trying to give him some good direction, but I really appreciate that. Um, it's safe to say that Woody has been in every commercial structure in the town of Prescott Valley, every single one, and the things that I take stock in, and the fact that I don't get the phone calls at two o'clock in the morning when one of them burns down, he got all of those phone calls for those thirty-five years, now that he has some staff that he's able to designate to, uh, they go often to them, but if they can't find them in the middle of the night, who do they call? Woody Lewis. Um, I regard Woody and his, uh, stewardship as probably the favor's part of my job, because I regard him as the best building official in the state of Arizona. I've known a lot of them, I don't necessarily like many of them, but I really like Woody, uh, in his capacity in that regard. His, uh, I'm not, I'm not looking for applause, I'm trying to relate it to this guy. His customer service is legendary. Woody oftentimes comes in and complains to me on Monday, 'cause he worked over the weekend, because somebody needed inspection to be able to meet their deadline, so he went out on his own time, and of course I laugh, and I say, "Well, that's your business." I'd rather do something fun on my day off, but Woody, again, has that legendary customer service. Probably most of all, the service that he's provided, not only to neophytes in the business like myself, but others who are coming up in the building safety industry, uh, Woody has really been part of the steadfast leadership of building officials that are maybe a little long in the tooth, that know all of the implications of doing things right, bringing up younger people, and you may not know this, but he's served many different boards and commissions, all building code-related, that teaches young inspectors how to do proper inspections. As a result, there are, uh, training classes now that are put on statewide because of Woody Lewis, and those inspectors that we get from those, um, services mean that we have quality people that will follow in his footsteps, and I wanna tell you, Woody, I'm proud of you, and again, I'm gonna burn this to my memory, because it's probably the second time I've seen you without your hat.
Woody, I just wanted to add my congratulations to you for three and a half decades working here. You are phenomenal, uh, you're well-known in town, you've always been a by-the-book kinda guy, and I've always recognized that in you, in, in your dedication to make sure that any construction projects done in this community are done with the safety and health of the community members in mind, and I thank you for that.
Hey, Woody, uh, thank you. Thank you for thirty-five years of service, and however many more years you've got ahead of you, uh, it, it, the, the thought around the state is that Prescott Valley is the leadership, it, it has the leadership role in new construction and in reasonable inspections, uh, timely inspections, and that's all your fault. And so, with, with that in mind, uh, I just really wanna thank you, uh, because this town is legendary in terms of its treatment of new construction, both commercial and residential, and it's because of you. Thank you.
Woody, um, I'm so glad you're on our team, I hope this doesn't mean you're retiring anytime soon, 'cause you look like a young fella, and, um, just, thanks so much, thanks for your customer service, that's very important in, in our jobs, and I'm just, just congratulations.
Congratulations, Woody, thirty-five years, that's a great accomplishment, and, uh, with all the accolades that I'm hearing come from Larry, and I, I don't often hear Richard Parker call somebody legendary, so, that, that in itself is an accomplishment, uh, and again, whenever we have some, uh, developers come before us, they always say how our process is, is so well-done and so quick, and, uh, a lot of it has to do with you and, and what you've done over thirty-five years, so, uh, you've been a pioneer and a mentor to a lot of people, so, thank you for your service, and hopefully you're gonna be around for a while longer, so, thank you.
Woody, I wanna thank you, uh, there's very little that I can add that hasn't already been said or will be said, but, thank you so very much for your dedication to our town. Uh, you started off when the town was very, very young, and you're still with us today, and you've seen a lot of growth, uh, I don't know, there are those that say that's not so good, and those that are, that are very happy about that, but, and I'm sure you've heard a lot of that, but, thank you so much for the, that, again, for the dedication. Um, you're someone that makes all of us very proud to be able to sit up here and do the job that we do, because we know we have people like you in the field who we can be proud of from day to day, and thank you again.
I also have been in the construction industry for a very long time, and I just am in awe of you to think how many changes you've seen in all the codes, and maybe you've even implemented most of them, but when somebody's building something, they're building a dream, and I just think how much you've been a part of those dreams, since you have been in every single building in Prescott Valley. If you think of the infancy that our town was in, when you started your work, and where we are today, that's an amazing career, so I just really wanna applaud you also, so thank you for your time.
Well, thanks again, Woody, for your service.
Well, thanks again, Woody, for your service. You're to be admired. You set examples for the rest of the staff, it is just a great thing to know a gentleman such as yourself. You keep the town moving forward, you keep the wheels greased, I'm so glad that you're with us, and I hope you stay with us for a little bit longer, okay? Thank you very much.
You heard about the man on the job. I want to talk to you about the man. In June, I had been officially in office 17 years, but I served on boards and commissions before that, so Woody and I go back 21 years. Woody, you're a gentleman, you are a caring, confident human being. I know that personally, and I can't give you a lot of examples, but I'm gonna give you one. Anytime that I happen to pass by Woody in our building next door, he always made me feel good about myself. He always made me feel valued, and I suspect he's done it with all the rest of you. Now, is he a rascal? Of course! But, he's an enduring rascal, and we're truly blessed, Woody.
This right here, Woody, what do you think about this? Should we be addressing this, or what? This probably shouldn't be, right? Write 'em up.
Yeah, but it's worse without the run.
Very true. So, we live in a time where if someone is at a job for 35 months, they think it's a long time, and this man has been here for 35 years. I mean, that is incredible, Woody, and it's truly something to be proud of. And for those of you who are not sure, Woody has a very, very difficult job, and over time has had a difficult job. I mean, he had to go out to job sites, tell someone that they did their job wrong, and that they had to fix it, but Woody could do it, where these people would understand it, respect it, be happy that he pointed it out and found that error, and went on with his day. There's a lot to be said about that, and this man right here, as Richard said, writes the book on it, so. I hear it every single day from contractors about how great Woody is, and how they love it if he comes out of the office and sees them, or if he comes to a job, they truly respect you, and that says a lot, so, congratulations, Woody.
I think everything's been said.
Ladies, you want to bring that down?
That way I'll be able to say something without a hat.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, item eight, council comments and communication. Start on the end with Councilman Packard.
Yes, I'd just like to remind folks, tomorrow evening, it's 6:00, we have the healing fields, the end of the healing fields, there's gonna be a good ceremony there, and it's a good thing to attend, and I have been out there helping a little on the flags and stuff, it's amazing what people have said about that healing field, they're just so grateful to see it, and I'm glad to see it now, too. Anyway, that's tomorrow at 6:00.
Councilman.
Again, Vitalent and the Red Cross are still seeking blood donations, so if you have an opportunity to donate, please try to do that. Thank you.
Councilman, Vice Mayor.
I need to go last.
Okay. Councilman.
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, the police department is doing a free book giveaway, it's listed on the town's Facebook page, I mean, on the town website and their Facebook page. It's September 16th, from 4:00 to 7:00, and it's gonna take place at Theater on the Green. I've been told also that on Monday, September 14th, there's gonna be free COVID testing at the Findlay Toyota Center from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I went searching for more information on that, and I couldn't find it, it was announced the other night at our, at the school governing board meeting. Also at the school governing board meeting, it went on for three and a half hours, but one of the items that they talked about was the school property tax for this year. The tax rate has gone down for this year, it's gone down from $4.78 to $4.61, that's per hundred thousand. Even though the rate went down, you may be paying more in taxes, because the value of your property has gone up, so I just wanted to pass that on and let everybody know. And last is, if you haven't filled out the census, please do so, that could cost us lots of money if nobody, if not enough people fill it out, or not everybody fills it out, so please, if you haven't filled out the census, the census workers are out there knocking on doors, they're not strangers, and they're not asking for any money, so, they are out there, and there's nothing that they're gonna ask that you shouldn't have to answer to, so thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, welcome everybody tonight. I'd like to point out that on 9F, the library, yes, the library received another's care grant for Stay Connected tech kits, and it was in the amount of $10,000, and I'm just happy to say, I've never been part of an organization that gets a grant about every time we meet, so, that's a job well-done by our staff. Also, so happy for Agapi House that was here tonight, they just placed a father-daughter family, and I noticed in their pictures that they had a "Home Sweet Home" sign hanging in their new apartment, so that's pretty awesome, and also, the follow-through that they have for their families to assure stability with paperwork, medical issues, and life independence, so they don't just put them in a house and then walk away, they stick with them. Also, on September 18th at 5:30, there's a Hope Still Floats virtual fundraiser for Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, which is here in Prescott Valley, and if you want more information on that, you can go to yfac.org/hsf2020, or find them on Facebook. And then we got this little pen in our box, it's like purple and turquoise, and it's from West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, and their mission is "Hope, Help, and Healing," and the pen is a reminder that it is time to break the silence and reduce stigma for mental health, so please join all of us in asking, "Are you okay?" to friends and family. Also, MapForce, which is doing a lot of things in our area, they recently had a post, and the acronym is ALGIA Action Plan, as part of their mental health first aid, so you may want to look that up, I thought that was kind of interesting, access, listen, guide, and encourage. And then lastly, Meals, we recently got the final, the annual report for Meals on Wheels, and the information stated that there are six routes in Prescott Valley that they go through to pass out meals, and they serve residents, our residents receive 22,000 meals a year from Meals on Wheels, so I'd like to thank that organization.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor, I'll go, if you'd like. Normally, I don't talk during this segment, but I think it's something that's important I want to bring up. 2004, April 14th, my partner in narcotics was killed by a drunk driver, and the Cottonwood Police Department suffered the same tragedy this past week. Commander Jody McCouch was killed by a drunk driver while riding his motorcycle, so please, 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 put their family, put the Cottonwood community in your prayers, and give him some positive thoughts, so, I appreciate that. Vice Mayor.
Okay. This is tough for me, I will get emotional, but hear me out. I have some delightful and hard-reading people to thank. Heidi, Latoya, Mark, Josh, Sergeants Kaufman and Roberts, our police chief back there, and the members of the PV Police Foundation, and Mayor Palguda, but especially, I want to thank the well-over 200 citizens who came out to the Thank the Blue event on September 2nd. Our PV citizens are a blessing, and I am humbled by them on a frequent basis, but sadly, I'm going to call out a courier reporter whom I refuse to give the honor of naming, and I'm going to call out the Prescott Courier editorial staff. This reporter arrived at the Thank the Blue event without contacting anyone on the planning committee, and apparently with a head and a heart full of bias. His reporting on the event was not just inaccurate, it was ugly and not based on fact. I am calling the Courier out for allowing a shameful misrepresentation of the event on behalf of myself and the citizens who were in attendance. Of course, my comments will either not be reported or changed to meet an agenda, and not represent the true spirit and intent regarding the Thank the Blue event. The misrepresentations of the facts are not going to stand the test of time. It was an acute insult to our citizens, and to me personally. Mister Reporter, I publicly call you out, and I have a question for you. I was identified to you as the organizer of the event. Why did you never contact me, or approach me, the night of the event? I was the one with facts. Sadly, I suspect our facts were not what you were seeking. Why? Because it was a warm and caring crowd of appreciative and peaceful citizens, and therefore, not worth accurate reporting. Perhaps you found it boring to report on it factually. Mister Reporter, I do not wish you ill intent. I encourage you to gain wisdom and a peaceful heart, so you can recognize and respect truth and value its worth, and not choose to distort it in your reporting. So why did I choose this venue to speak out? This is an official and duly constituted meeting, which is recorded and minutes-kept, and now, this is on a public record. This community is owed a public apology. Thank you so much for allowing me to get this out.
Vice Mayor, nicely said, and I do want to say, and this wasn't something we discussed earlier, obviously we just met up on the dais this evening, but Richard Haddad from the Prescott Courier did reach out to me earlier this afternoon and spoke, he apologized for the article, advised that somehow it had slipped through editor scrutiny, and that it has been changed, as well as the video has been removed from Facebook and their site as well, so, that means a lot, when they step up and say that. He had no excuse for the reporter, he recognized some issues and some deficiencies there, and they're gonna work on that in the future, and hope that this sort of misreporting doesn't happen again, so, we have to give them props for that.
May I say one more thing?
Go ahead, ma'am.
It's obvious that I did not know that, nor that he knew what my comments were gonna be. If there was any heat to come at anyone, I wanted it to be at me, so, thank you for that, because this has been painful.
No, ma'am. Vice Mayor, you did an amazing job with that project, along with everyone else you had listed, and we look forward to that being a bigger and better event every year. With that being said, moving on, item nine, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, we've all had a chance to review, now is the time to either make a motion or remove an item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar by electronic vote.
A second.
Clerk, please call vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 10A, zoning map change, ZMC 20-003, whistle-stop, recreation vehicle park, this is a public hearing, it'll be open at this point. Mr. Parker?
I'd like to introduce you to Ed Packard, he's one of our planners, you notice that we've been hiring planners by the foot, and so, Ed will be presenting this item, and I would assist Ed in any way in responding to your questions.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ed Packard, I'm staff planner with the town of Prescott Valley, pleased to be here, and here to talk about ZMC 20-003. It is a 251 space-proposed RV park.
Please, you might have to wake that up. In case you don't worry about it, he's got it.
He gets to relax.
There we go. It's located just north of Kachina Way on SR 69. I mentioned it's 22 and a half acres, 251 proposed lots or spaces, it's not subdivided, it will be, remain under one ownership, and proposed to be leased spaces. Proposed zoning, the current zoning is RSPAD, as part of an earlier development plan done in, I think, 2008. The proposed zoning is C2PAD, which is more fitting of the proposed RV park. There is several issues, I'll just hit on the main points. North Village Way is proposed in this, its frontage on North Village Way is proposed to be developed, or paid for to be developed. proposed to be developed or paid for to be developed with, with this application. It will match up with the approved development to the north, which is, um, I understand they are now revising their plans, so the North Village Way will match up at that location. Um, there is a ADOT easement along the north, right away there, or north property boundary. There we go. Along there that is in poor condition that they will need to, and they're working on engineering plans to shore that up and get that in the condition that, um, where it won't adversely affect its development. And then also access, there is the main access off of SR sixty-nine on this driveway here, but it only allow, there will be a, a median there restricted to right-in, right-out movements only. And because of this, they brought in this proposed extension of Kachina Way, which will, um, provide access left-in, left-down, out movements from the development to the intersection of Kachina Place and SR sixty-nine. And they will be making improvements to Kachina Way, or Kachina Place, and also redoing that, uh, signalized, there's an existing signal there, but they will be widening that and making improvements there to service the, uh, the proposed development. The commission approved, uh, recommended approval of the zoning map change at the meeting in August, on August tenth, and with the proposed stipulations, all of them standard, including the two percent surcharge on all rents collected in this development.
Thank you. Counsel?
Ed, that was a great presentation. I watched your planning commission presentation too, and it was very good. So thank you and welcome aboard. So I appreciate that there's two access point here because I think that's very important. I appreciate that one of them's fully signalized. I like that North Village Way is getting closer and closer. I spoke to Richard today and asked him how far between this and the Ca- Cabin project to the south, and he said it's about a quarter of a mile, so we're getting close for that access to the one sixty-nine. Um, I'm also excited, uh, that as a Quailwood resident, that the Dorn project is coming in and getting closer to final map, according to Richard. And I want to say that, um, uh, more trashcans and doggy stations if possible. I don't know where the developer is. Anyway, when they come in and, um, I like that our requirement is a tree per every two spots, so that's going to make this a very nice lush park. And, um, I understand from the planning commission meeting that there are going to be some park models, so I think that's a great idea. My husband and I appreciate, um, RVing and they're usually always there. And I think that was the end of my comments. Oh, and I'm, I appreciate them developing Village Way.
Anyone else from council? Councilman?
I just have one question. This is an RV park, correct?
Yes.
Is there a time limit on the RVs? Thirty days, two weeks, two months? What is it?
Um, there's no time limit that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Counselor?
My only comment too is I know this is also very near to the barbecue place and for the guido's pizzas, so I think that's going to be awesome for those establishments as well. So thank you for this.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So Richard, we don't have a time limit on the stay? People can live there forever?
There's not a time li- time limit regarding a residency in a RV park. Most of them patrol that themselves.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that Ed seeks an answer to that question when you guys look at the final development plan, which will be weeks into the future.
Anything else from council? Sir, go ahead.
I was just going to add that this is, once again, this is leased and not subdivided, so that will encourage or discourage, uh, people building whatever they build and typically see in mobile poem parks. More of a transient nature.
Anything else, counsel? At this time, it's also for anyone out in the audience that would like to come down and comment on this. This is your opportunity as a public hearing. And with no one, we're going to close the public hearing at this time. We're going to move on to ten B, zoning map change, ZMC twenty dash zero zero three, whistle stop RV park for the first reading. Clerk?
Can I get a motion to read twice on two separate occasions?
I'd like to make a motion for the town clerk to, uh, read the zoning map change ordinance on two separate occasions.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Clerk now, please.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'm sorry to, we've got to read the, uh, motion exactly as written because we also need to indicate that it'll be, uh, voted on at the end of the second reading.
Okay, so I'd like to say...
This will not be a vote at all?
No.
We're just reading it?
No, this will be a vote.
Okay.
Yes, we're voting to decide how we're going to read it, whether we're going to read it twice by, or, uh, by title only, or whether we read it in full, and then we'll be placing it on final passage at the second reading.
So read by title only? Councilwoman Hunt, would you like to clarify that?
So, I can't read it because you have the little box here. Can you take the box off? Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to read ordinance number eight seventy-nine approving ZMC twenty dash zero zero three once by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage and sign any agreement under proposition two oh seven or motion not to read ordinance number eight seventy-nine.
Your, your, your motion is to read it as opposed to not reading it, so you don't want to give both motions.
Okay. So I want to read it.
That's right.
I want her to read it. Thank you, Ivan.
And I still second it.
Okay. Counselmember Gressman?
Whoops.
And that passes unanimously?
Thank you, ma'am. Now go ahead and read.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC twenty dash zero zero three, by changing the zoning classification of parcels from RSPAD Residential and Services Planned Area Development zoning to C two PAD Commercial and General Sales and Services Planned Area Development zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item ten C, final development plan, FDP twenty dash zero zero six, Hamel Commercial Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, you're considering a final development plan for approximately five acres, which is along Viewpoint Drive. It'll be the first opportunity for retail commercial on Viewpoint Drive north of the traffic interchange. Hopefully it'll spawn some additional development in that regard. Excuse me. The property was actually zoned in, in two thousand and six, when a master development plan was submitted for, uh, the previous project, which included fifty-three acres. It was called something like North Ridge Gate or something like that. Uh, this is a portion, uh, there's five acres, what would be the south, uh, portion of the property that will develop immediately. And to the north, there's approximately one acre piece, which will develop in the future. This illustrates the initial development, uh, which comprises approximately thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial development, including a, uh, convenience store, a car wash, and a large, uh, area for, uh, retail development. The property is zoned C two PAD, which means these uses are permitted as a matter of right. As part of the review of this, the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of last year reviewed a revised preliminary development plan, sought public comment on that, and forwarded this to you with a recommendation for approval. I had a conversation with, uh, councilperson Hunt earlier today and, uh, pointed out that one of the people from, uh, the group that spoke in opposition to this change was concerned that there be an opportunity to develop a grocery store here. The property that's being considered this evening is not large enough to accommodate a grocery store, but I can share with you that the balance of the property, which comprises fifty-plus acres of property, has a designated area for a future, um, grocery store. So the surrounding property, when that develops, would accommodate that use or need. Again, this comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the approved preliminary development plan. Staff stands in support of, uh, this application as submitted and would respond to any question you have.
Counselor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So actually, Richard, this looks like it has three ingress and egress.
It has two ingress, egress, uh, one to the north, your point's well taken, to a future development, that's approximately three-quarters of an acre to the north.
Okay.
The, uh, balance to the south has, uh, two ingress egresses, one off of Viewpoint Drive, uh, and then full, um, ingress egress off of, uh, Pronghorn Ranch Road.
That's great. Um, and according to social media, people are really excited about the ANW, so there you go.
And I'll be sure that I'll be eating there, I'm sure, as well.
So, Richard, it's, it's not going to be a twenty-four hour truck stop? Where they're going to be doing repairs and...
No, it's a commercial C two use district. A truck stop would be prohibited in this zoning district.
Thank you for clarifying that because I believe that was also a, um, rumor that was going out, saying that that's what it was going to be like, something we would see on the highway in Kingman.
Uh, it is a full-service convenient, convenience store.
Yes, absolutely. So, and then also, just to reiterate, the, the fifty other acres can certainly accommodate a grocery store in the future, should a grocer would like to relocate to that location.
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
I just want to say how rewarding it is for me to finally be able to vote on a development north of eighty-nine A. I thought I was going to leave office and it wasn't going to happen. Um, I also want to compliment the project. We know how much it's needed. And while we had opposition, we had way more support, and I just want that point to be understood.
Thanks, ma'am. Counselor?
Um, on the south side there, is that building already existent?
No.
And so that would be also part of this project, correct?
Correct.
And then on that same street there, isn't, there's a fire department over there too, isn't there not?
No, uh, this would be north of, of the inter- traffic interchange. If you're familiar with the stake center of the church that's there.
Oh, so this will be up there?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is on the north side of eighty-nine A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was thinking in my head somehow over by the fitness center on...
Nope, it's across the way.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Counselman?
I just wanted to remind everyone that in order to put a grocery store there, number one, you have to own the property. Number two, you have to have the wherewithal to build that grocery store. So I don't think that exists today, so in the future, we can only hope that someone will come along and meet those two requirements.
I don't know if I have, oh, yes, I do have this illustration here that Norm's pretty proud of. Uh, we've worked with the developer to, uh, exact funds from them to be able to do offside improvements to the intersection. And what is indicated there is the ultimate improvement of that intersection. You approved a reversionary plat, uh, earlier in the meeting, which accepted those rights-of-way, uh, for the public, but that will finish this intersection, so you'll have full turning movements in and out of this site as well as throughout. And that's being done in conjunction with, uh, public funds from Norm's department to achieve this as well. And this is an illustration for those that are home, um, kind of similar to what the developer has, um, developed across the street at Roberts Market, uh, very similar architecture.
And that's similar to the Snap Fitness, Highway eighty-nine A dental building?
Looked pretty much the same.
Pretty exactly.
Very nice accents. Uh, one thing I can point out is, uh, in the town, we approved a height standard for interchange, uh, facilities where they're at a traffic interchange, you can have greater heights so as to be able to identify the users below within a certain radius. And as you can see, that sign is forty-five feet. Why? Because that's what it takes to be able to observe that while you're cruising down the highway. And when we approved that height, uh, consideration, it was before we had interchanges in Prescott Valley.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I like the way you said that this project will create synergy for the rest of the fifty, so I want to make sure our residents heard that again. And then secondly, when you said that the intersection is being done with public funds, we're advancing those funds and we're going to be paid back when the rest of the development comes.
Couple of things...
Just for the record?
Yes, we have a reimbursement agreement when, uh, with the adjoining property owners for that purpose. As part of this project as well, we are recouping funds that we laid out for public infrastructure. So those come, this will be the first time we'll have an opportunity to recoup those dollars.
Great. There's no other questions for Mr. Parker? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number twenty-one fifty-four approving FDP twenty dash zero zero six for the Hamel Commercial Development and to sign any agreement under Prop two oh seven by electronic vote.
I'll make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item ten D, final development plan, FDP twenty dash zero one zero, Granville Unit thirteen B.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, members of the commission, excuse me, uh, council you are, um, thirteen B is a subdivision comprising eighty-two lots on approximately eighteen acres. You can see it illustrated above. It shows a relationship between thirteen B and thirteen C, which is the next topic on your agenda. But this action is for thirteen B. Talking with Mr. Contadino earlier this week, he tells me that thirteen B, the infrastructure will be done, uh, completed before December of this year, and he con- inflates that he'll have most of that product sold by the end of the year. I would respond to questions you may have.
Richard, just for clarification, this was all part of the original Granville approval plan back in the day?
Nineteen ninety-seven, approval of, um, Granville at thirty-four hundred units is part of, uh, these subdivision units that you're considering this evening.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from council? Can I get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion. A motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number two-one-five-two adopting and approving a final development plan, FDP two-zero dash zero-ten for Granville Unit thirteen B by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item ten E, final development plan, FDP twenty dash zero-one-one, Granville Unit thirteen C.
And thirteen C is illustrated on this illustration in green, and it comprises, uh, eighty-three acres and two-hundred-and-twenty-one lots. Uh, the use is consistent with the approved master development plan for Granville, and we would recommend approval. The development of thirteen C will follow the initial development of thirteen B. I'd respond to any question, marriage or direction.
You answered it in the previous comment. Counsel, we have anything for Mr. Parker? And just again, this is not adding any additional homes that Mr. Contadino did not have approved back in nineteen ninety-nine.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. If there's no other questions for Mr. Parker, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number two-one-five-three adopting and approving a final development plan, FDP twenty dash zero ones, one for Granville Unit thirteen C, and authorize signature of any agreement under Prop, Proposition two-zero-seven by electronic vote.
I'll make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item ten F, proposed migration HTE system from AS four hundred server to Superior Horizon Cloud.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I just want to first say, Richard and I did not call each other on what we are wearing tonight.
Well, it was more fun to think you did. Well, it was more fun to think you did.
I am coming to you tonight to talk about briefly a proposed migration of our HTE system from an internal server to Superior Horizon Cloud. Usually, I'm talking about getting something when I come before you. Tonight, I'm actually talking about moving something away from us to somebody else. So, for many years, we've used the HTE system for our financial system, our customer accounts, our business licenses, everything that's a public administration-type software, and we've had that on an internal server. That server, every five years or so, costs us about $45,000. I'm pretty much, though I am in my succession, in my succession planning, passing information on to my staff, I'm pretty much the guy on that system. I came here with the knowledge of that system, which was probably part of why I got hired in the first place, but it's a, it's a system, an AS400 system is one that's very specialized, and so I've always done that. In the past few years, I've looked at, pretty much every year, I've looked at the cloud solution that HTE offers as, as an option. And basically, what a cloud solution is, is instead of us housing that server with all of the data and everything else, we pass that responsibility basically on to HTE, and then we just run a little client over the internet for our staff members. In the past, as I've researched it, it's never been cost-effective. It was always way too expensive for the administration that I could let go of. It was going to cost too much. This year, we are needing to do an upgrade to the HTE system, to a system called HTML5. It's, it's a much better system for HTE. It answers, it solves a lot of problems that we have on a daily basis with our machines trying to run HTE, and we've, with the new federal W4 forms that have been introduced, our finance department is getting a stack about this big of W4s that they have to manually enter each payroll. In order to fix that, we have to go to this new version. Going to this new version is going to cost us about $12,000 probably. So I've, I started talking, I started looking into it again, started talking to HTE again about the cloud solution. They, I think they really want our business, so they lowered their, their pricing of the cloud solution. They agreed to, if we move to the cloud solution, that they will upgrade us to the new version for free, because we are then on their servers, so that's a, a nice benefit for us. We pay about $98,000 a year annually for the HT maintenance, which is basically all the upgrades. It's the customer service, the support for the software. This cloud solution, moving to it, will change that to where we're not paying a maintenance fee anymore, but we'd be paying a cloud fee. That cloud fee is $122,000, so you're looking about $24,000 more a year to go to that, rather than what we're on. With the cloud solution, we'll be able to get rid of our AS400 system. We won't have to replace that every five years or so, at about $9,000 a year, if you're breaking that out annually. We pay about $2,300 a year for maintenance on the AS400 system, so we can also get rid of that. So that's about $11,000 that we're gaining back, so that brings that, that cost much Staff is always, as you are aware, and as you guys have directed us, we've always had a preference to use outside contract services as much as possible in order to keep staff cost low. This is one of those things that I think can help us do this, and I, and I believe, with my experience of looking at this, I think we're finally at a place where the, the cost justification is there to move to a cloud service for this. Something that you might be wondering about is the security of, of the cloud solution. The cloud solution's very secure. They are compliant with PCI-DSS, which is a payment card industry standard, and SSAE16, SOC 1 and SOC 2 audit standards. You'd have to ask Katie what all that means, but basically, that's just very, that's, that's financial security, basically, for everybody's data. And one of the great things about running it on the cloud, I came to you a couple months ago to move the, our payment system to the cloud, which has worked very well, and, and we're actually paying less for that than we did before, but this, in the same way, gets that data out of our hands and into their hands, so, you know, God forbid, data was compromised at some point. If that were to happen now, which, you know, we have great security, so I don't believe that would ever happen, but if something ever did happen, we'd kind of be on the hook for, you know, for having that data compromised. If we go to the cloud, that's all on HTE at that point. That, it kind of, it completely removes us from the equation, which I think is a real important thing, so. I'd be able, I'd be glad to answer any other questions you might have. You have information in front of you with some of the other advantages of going to the cloud, but basically, it's taking a lot of administration headache away from us, frees us up to do other projects and work on other things.
Counselor Grossman?
Yeah, does this system have any redundancy and backup?
Yes, good question. Much like us, we keep a nightly backup of that system, keep that tape off-site at the PD, so basi, off-site at the PD, so basically, every day, I go get that tape, bring it over, and, and so we do back up that system on a nightly basis. With the cloud, again, they're completely responsible for all of that. They have redundant systems in multiple locations, so they do all the backups, they do everything.
Counselor?
So, Casey, we got to talk, and I appreciate this recommendation, particularly because they're assuming all the liability, and that, in their power point, they say all data is considered sensitive.
Yes.
And that we can offload the day-to-day administration responsibilities, and for the most part, as we talked, it's pretty much a wash, because we're paying that extra, like $10,000, to have our own private system and not be thrown in with other municipalities, which makes it even safer, I would assume, right?
Yes, the, the cost on there of $122,000 that you see annually, they have a, a system that is a shared system, where basically, we're on with other municipalities on a server. Now, everything is separated, so other municipalities can't get to our data and vice versa, but we have a lot of modifications to the HTE system to make it run better for bills and things like that, and a private partition fixes a lot of problems with that, and the private partition is 122 instead of 113, so there's a little bit of an increase there, but being on a private partition, I think, is better all the way around. You might ask the question of the cost increases, because it has a 5% built-in increase each year. Our current maintenance is 5% also increase each year that we expect, so the difference there, that, that's not going to be any different. There's still going to be that 5% increase annually, as there is now, it just starts a little bit higher than what we are paying right at this moment.
Great. There's no other questions for Casey? Can we get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a five-year agreement with Superior LLC for Horizon Cloud Services.
Have a second?
By electronic vote.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 10G, Contract for Annual Street Striping Award. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The item we do have before you is our annual outsourced striping contract. That's the yellow white lines and the symbols you see, crosswalk painting and school crosswalks. What I have in front of you is typically, every year in May, we talk about renewing all our annual contracts. We talk, we outsource quite a bit in public works for, you know, private vendors to provide the service for us and pay them. As you can see here, this is what council considered for 10 of our annual contracts. You can see them listed there, but at the bottom there, that's one I wanted to point to, is you can see our service contracts, we had to rebid the striping and pavement markers. We worked hard with our existing vendor that we've had a long-term contract with, and he chose not to renew. So, as we, I alerted council back in May, that we had to rebid this particular contract to look for a contractor. So that was done. We did take bids, sent out for bid, that's why I'm coming to you. 60 days later, we renewed the contract, or refreshed the contract and sent out for contractor bid, and we did receive two bids from contractors that can perform this work. Usually, Pavement Marketing LLC is the low bidder. Doesn't appear my slides are working, so, simple enough. We had just a town-wide striping, but went over that. So, what staff is recommending for tonight is to go ahead and award to Pavement Markings for our annual contract. Just a little refresher for council, these contracts are, we looked at every year, but they can renew it up to five years, so this would be a refreshed contract for striping, and we're looking forward to getting this vendor on board to perform our striping for us. So, count, staff is recommending award to Pavement Marketing LLC in the amount of $146,742.64. You have to answer any questions council may have.
Is it normal, Norm just have two people bid for, for striping, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's a big truck. These are, you know, big, big companies that can do the work, so, yes, these are two very viable contracts. We went out and, you know, explained the, the work to them, so, yes, don't, didn't anticipate a lot, a lot of bidders.
Great. Counselor?
Norm, how does this $146,000 compare to what we paid the other contract, the previously?
It has gone up.
A little bit.
To give you, you know, the price of business has gone up, so that's a lot of reason why the old vendor didn't want to renew. So to give you a benchmark, typically, we pay about 5 cents a foot for a red, a white or yellow line, it's gone up to 8 cents, so it's been about 50% more, and that's just cost of doing business and paint and technology and the like. So we do monitor that, you know, not every line gets touched every year. A lot of the lines do, but some of our symbols, we use a thermoplast, so not every symbol's done every year, but we use that discretion, but we do hit all our major arterial roadways.
And how many years is this for?
This is for one year, but can renew it up to five years, like all the annual contracts you see on that first slide.
Great. Anything else from council? Can we get a motion?
I'll be glad to make a motion. Motion to approve the annual street striping contract with Pavement Marketing LLC by electronic vote.
I'll second. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 10H, Purchase of Hot Melt Crack Seal Materials Award.
Mayor, council, this next item is for purchase materials only, the hot melt crack seal. If council members in the past, I typically will bring, I play, get to play show and tell every year, because I bring a box of the crack seal material, and typically, order it by the big semi-load. This year, I was no surprises, can typically a consent item, but it was put on the regular agenda, so, don't have any pictures, per se, but picture my black box full of black stuff. Well, that's the crack seal. Council may recall, presentation back in July, we have different street maintenance methodologies. Crack seal is one that, let's talk about a pavement that's not very old in age. Typically, you crack it at a certain, you know, expansion joint, and we fill that crack because water is what hurts your subgrades. So, I think you've seen it before, we go out with the, toss these, you know, black boxes into the big melting pot, and we have wands that we crack seal with, so this is for purchase materials only. What's important to note here, we are buying three full truckloads. It's in, to do, as you can see, this is what we put on the town website, the particular roadways that are up for chip seal next summer, but part of the preparation is we do the crack seal in the fall, to fiddle the cracks over the winter weather, so it's just part of our maintenance treatment. We are going to order three truckloads. This is, we are able to purchase through the collective bargaining agreement with state contracts, that we can get a great price, and in addition to a great, great material from vendors, so we are able to purchase off of state contracts. So one of them is the Yavapai County Sealant Contract, and also, the other one is the A.DOT Sealant Contract, so we're able to buy that material at a very good competitive price. So, we will, upon council consideration for award of purchase material, takes a couple weeks to get this stuff in. We anticipate at the October 8th meeting, the labor to install the crack seal materials out for bid now, and we anticipate at October, October 8th meeting, we'll award to a contract to apply this particular material. So, routine maintenance in general, come this time every year, to talk about crack seal work, and that's what this item is, is to buy the material.
Great. Council? Pretty cut and dry when we're talking about crack seal. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to award the purchase of hot melt crack seal materials for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 to A. Craft Co. Incorporated, the amount of $22,899, and B. to Superior Supply Incorporated, in the amount of $52,666.26, for a total purchase amount of $74,675.25, by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 11, Comments from the Public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council, need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter and ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. At this time, I would like to welcome anyone down to the front. Welcome, ma'am. Just state your name, please.
I'm Zoe.
Oh, no, just hang on, wait until you get to the microphone.
My name is Zoe Sharon. I live on Viewpoint Drive, on the side where all the work is going on right now. About that. And I came in a couple weeks ago and addressed our concern about the median that we're talking about putting in there, and I've driven around different neighborhoods. I'm hoping that we can stop from having the median put in. I understand the need for more lanes, as it's an arterial path for traffic, but from, on Robert Road, from Florentine all the way to Tranquil, there's four lanes, no median on that road, and having a median on Viewpoint would cause a lot of obstruction for people with motorhomes who bought their properties because of the larger areas to park our motorhomes in, and it would, it just wouldn't be convenient for us, and I've spoken to several neighbors, and they all agree. One of the other things is that if you didn't put a median in, then chances are, you wouldn't be having to cut down some of the tall, beautiful trees that are in the way, if you're taking 100 feet of, or 50 feet both ways of easement, and I'd like you to consider that before you go any further. I know there's a lot going on down at one end of Viewpoint, and there are two houses away from my house. I don't know when you'll have the finances to continue on, but before you get them, I'm asking to reconsider the median, and...
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I would ask that you speak with Norm Davis about the roadway design on that. When you get a chance.
He is...
The gentleman right there with his hand up?
Okay, thank you.
And be sure, ma'am, to give him your, your contact number, or give the clerk your contact number, I'd love to reach out with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There's anyone else in the audience? If not, can I get a motion for item 12, adjournment?
I'll make a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Please be safe.[1790.63][1790.63]